Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, any changes or additions to the agenda for this evening?
I have a point of order.
Pardon me?
I have a point of order on the agenda.
Okay.
Item number, well, allocation of undesignated local option sales tax funds for specified street projects. Line item three, the two-way street project, is still in committee, so by rules it cannot appear on the agenda tonight.
I'm sorry, would you make that point again? It's not--
That item is still in committee, so it cannot appear on the agenda tonight.
Still in committee?
Right.
Okay. So there won't be-- So there won't be--
That item has to be struck, just that one.
Well, then, the whole thing has to be struck. The whole thing would be postponed because you're not going to make a decision on the other items if that one hasn't been determined yet to be as a choice, correct? And is that--
I don't--
And where is--
You can--
Where is that in committee?
It was tabled at our last meeting, two to one.
For public safety?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which means it'll appear as the first item on our next agenda.
Okay. Okay, but I mean, do you agree? I mean, it would really-- There's no sense voting on anything else if that isn't going to be part of the mix because that's the expectation that's coming before counsel. That's the preparation that a lot of people in the committee have made towards a decision that was going to be rendered tonight, so we would table the whole thing. Any other thoughts on that? I mean, I'd otherwise--
I thought it was moving forward. I said, "I thought it was moving forward."
I'd like to hear John Morrissey's input on it, just to make sure. That's a rule I'm unfamiliar with.
John, could you come forward? So we have a list of items that are possibly going to be used for street improvements, and there's a list to be chosen from for allocation. One of those items separately is the two-way street project, which would be an amount of money towards relining the parking spaces in the streets--
Right.
--that sort of thing. So, I mean, essentially, there's an anticipation from the rest of the council that that's what they're going to be voting on tonight, so if that's not approved to be on the list, then the whole list should be--
You could vote on doing it, but not funding it. That's what your committee tabled, wasn't it? It was reallocation of funds?
Just--
No, we just tabled it for further discussion because we haven't had a chance to look at it yet.
All right.
Well, we've had a chance. We talked about it in depth, but it was tabled.
Yeah. And it was the last council meeting, or was it two council meetings ago, that your committee tabled it?
Uh, one council meeting ago.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that procedurally, what should have happened is should have another committee meeting, and somebody moved to take it up off the table. It's close enough to the last meeting that you probably could-- You could bring it back another council meeting. You can't leave things tabled indefinitely, but with only one meeting having passed, it's awkward.
But it would make sense if just if it's not-- If the motion is that it be stricken from consideration, we can also go through a vote and see if that passes. If not, then it can go forward as presented.
Yeah, I think probably parliamentary, if you're going beyond his point of order, you probably have to do that by a two-thirds vote. It's an extra level of--
I thought what we tabled was a specific--
I guess-- I wouldn't call it a veto, but it's--
Well, I would--
It's over and above upholding the motion to strike.
I don't know that that's what we're looking for. I just want to know whether, you know, when it's going to be complete to present to the whole council.
And what I'm saying is--
So if it's not complete tonight to present to the council, then nothing should be presented on the list.
If the ordinary course is you're going to discuss it more at committee, and you're going to bring something forward, or you can have a majority report and a minority report on what you want to do or don't want to do, the funding is behind that, and right now, it sounds to me like you're not sure what you want to present.
The other thing I'll ask, too, is Ways and Means hasn't really discussed this in quite a while, has it, Tom, in terms of that, the list of projects for funding?
Well, not the list. I mean, we--
Right.
The allocation is there.
We brought forward, they said there was roughly $150,000 to be allocated, but as far as the specific projects--
Right.
No, that's not--
Okay.
--anything that we discussed.
So, yeah, and I understand the intersection between the two committees because, you know, the project is one that falls under that, but I think your committee has to finish your business before any decision is made, I would think.
On this whole list?
Yeah.
See, I thought we only tabled moving one item forward, not the whole list.
We didn't consider the whole list. We only considered that one item.
Right, one item. So what was tabled wasn't what's here, it was only one item.
Yes, but Doug's request is that it be stricken from the list, and I just don't think that's what the council is expecting to be judging on how those dollars are spent.
Okay.
It's not a complete list.
Well, and I don't think, you know, two members of a committee should keep it from coming to council, so if we have to postpone it and then have our Public Safety Transportation Committee meeting, put it back on the agenda and then move on it.
That'd be the safer thing to do, is just get your committee meetings held, and you've got another meeting yet this month.
It has been--
Bring it back that way.
It's been tabled, so it comes up to the top of the agenda automatically in the next meeting.
Yeah.
All right, so it'll come-- So the-- So then, I guess what I'm asking then is if there's a motion to table the item, the action item, the entire action item as opposed to that one item on the list.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Move by Hallie to table the allocation of undesigned local option sales tax funds. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Anderson.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
So I know, Melanie, and I'm not trying to get you involved in this, but do we have a timeframe? Is-- Are the projects there, or is anything there time-sensitive that we have to approve to get them into? Because the idea is to get them in here before the end of the fiscal year.
Right, yeah, so the lost funds need to be used by the end of the fiscal year. Several of those items on the list are overlay items, and I have an overlay bid package that is waiting for a decision. We have another, like, eight blocks or so that are ready for bid, and if some of those items on those listed lists are selected, they'd be added in that bid package. So if a decision wouldn't be made tonight, I would probably move forward with the bid package and then bid future items separately.
Okay.
But, yeah, you are correct that we start to push it later into the year and possibly not getting a contractor. I mean, it's overlays, so there's one contractor who does the work anyway, but it would be nice to couple them all together.
Great, thank you, Melanie. But then, I don't think we're talking about holding anything up too long. I mean, the committee will meet between now and the next meeting and bring it back to council before then?
Within the two weeks.
Yeah. Okay. So we have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign?
Who seconded it?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Motion passes, so we'll postpone that. Okay, then we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes of the October 28 council meeting, approval of the November 1 payroll of $120,371.96, approval of a park use permit by Jefferson County Relay for Life 2020, your first resolution authorizing a transfer of funds. We passed an action item last time. You'll be seeing these transfers before they are actually done, so Rebecca has a couple there that she's going to be making, and approval of claims of the amount of $798,652.54, of which to Juris Construction, $129,957.79, and Municipal Pipe and Tool, $369,892. So entertain a motion then to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Thompson. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our public appearances, is John Graham here. He is not-- Aaron, I know you had a discussion with him about crosswalk signs. Can we give a little background on that before--
I actually don't. We were discussing it as far as street signs with looking at possibly moving that to a public safety meeting after he presented. We don't have a--
Okay.
I don't know what he was going to discuss as far as where he wanted a sign or two.
Okay. All right, so then we'll recommend to him if he does check back to put that on public safety agenda. Okay. Next, we have a presentation by Darian Sloot, Chamber of Commerce. Darian here?
Yeah, I have respectfully a request to be placed on the agenda for the next meeting when that vote comes to pass.
Okay, I'm fine with that, counsel. Any questions? That was going to be a presentation on the work that the chamber and the Convention of Visitors Bureau has done in surveying our downtown businesses, so thank you, and we'll look for you next time. So counsel, we'll move to our resolution action items and ordinances, and we've had a deleted item also, as you mentioned there, the financial-- the annual finance report. We'll move to our first, which is a revision amendment and addendum to the condition requirements for bidders for step two, and I think Steve Petrick's here from French Reniker. Steve?
Yes, I think I'll be here for the next three agenda items. So this first item to consider is addendum number one for the step-two sanitary sewer project. Just to kind of update the council, the project was sent out advertising for bidders after the last council meeting. As of about four o'clock today, we have about 49 people that have ordered plans that are-- said they're interested in bidding on the project. Of those, there's about 14 of me looking through and guessing that might be bidding as a prime contractor. The rest would be suppliers and subcontractors. So with that, we have been receiving a fair number of questions about the project, and with the project at this size, and you get lots of other eyes looking at them, there are places for where there could be questions with the bidding documents. So that's what this agenda item is for. It's really-- It's a three-page document. It's really just two main issues. There's some other little things in here that we're addressing with this addendum. The first item is a very simple change. We're removing the word audit on one page in the bidding documents. We've had concern expressed by at least one bidder that would be disqualified from bidding the project if the word audited stays in there. The rural development bidding requirements require us to use this specific format, and that format has-- the contractor submit three years' worth of balance sheets if they're the low bidder, and their standard format is to require those to be all audited. And this particular contractor has balance sheets that's reviewed by an accountant every year, but they don't have a full audit done every year. Then, the other main item in this addendum is all of the manholes on this project will have a PVC liner cast integrally inside the concrete manhole. We were notified by a concrete pre-casting supplier a week ago that the company we had specified stopped taking orders as of last week. This was news to us. We've used them on lots of other projects, and so apparently they had recently been acquired, and the new ownership had decided to shut down their factory. So the second part of this addendum is to add in an HDPE liner, which is one of the company that we specified's competitors in the specification. So that's the first item that you're approving. It's basically a change to the documents that you're going to have a public hearing on here with your second agenda item, so.
And all these other points are just clarifications?
Yep.
Okay.
Counsel, any questions on that? I think it's great we see all of that interest, so get cleaned up and move on. Entertained a motion to approve the consideration for revisions.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
So good.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign? Go on, Steve.
Okay, so the next-- next couple items, a public hearing is next, and so I guess if you'll go to the summarization letter, Jason, if you can. That's what I'm going to kind of go through here before we go to the public hearing. So again, I like to try to kind of hit the high points with this letter, now that we're getting ready to have the public hearing for the step-two sewer project. Tonight is the public hearing, obviously. Bids are due for this project on November 26 at 11:00 a.m. And I guess-- Why don't you scroll to the bottom first before I get too far into this? There's a couple drawings at the very bottom. Stuff there, if you could zoom out a little bit. Just so we're kind of all on the same page, I've put a couple general layout sheets here just so we can kind of see what we're talking about. On this sheet, north is to the right. This area right here is where step one ended, and so that's right there at Lamson Woods. And you can kind of see this squiggly line is the project. It goes all the way up to-- and then this is the rec center at MUM campus. It's kind of the scale of the project we're talking about here. Along the way, we cross Glasgow Road. It goes-- kind of skirts across to Chautauqua Park. We bore under the Burlington Northern Railroad in two locations, and we end up at MUM. So that's kind of the general scale of the project. It's about 16,600 linear feet of gravity sanitary sewer, 4,200 linear feet of sanitary sewer installed by boring, 78 manholes, and 3,500 linear feet of sewer lining. Okay, so now I'll go back to the contract details, back on the first page of that PDF. If you guys have any questions, jump in. This is exciting stuff. Back toward the bottom of the first page, the project has a completion date. It's a calendar day contract, so the contractor will have 500 calendar days to complete the project after the date of the notice to proceed. That notice to proceed is kind of contingent on how fast we get our work done and how fast a contract gets signed, but we're anticipating that the completion date will be sometime between August and October of 2021 on this job. Going to the next page, there are some insurance items. I'm going to kind of skip over those. There's not a whole lot there. Then on project budget, one item to just review. We have attached our opinion of probable cost for the project. Our estimate is at $9.5 million. One item just to note, the budget for the project with rural development financing package has a construction estimate of about $8.9 million with the $900,000 contingency fund on top of that 8.9. So we are over that 8.9 number. We've kind of had this discussion with rural development, and they want to get this thing out for bids, and then we'll see where we are. I'm not going to make any promises, but step one came out with our estimate was around $5 million, and the low bid, I think, was three-something. So I'm not saying it's going to be that way this time, but that's one reason rural development wanted to wait before calling wolf on this situation. So we'll see where those come out, and we may be back-- hopefully not-- be back to discuss that at a future meeting. Rights of way and permits. I don't have the number of easements, but I think it's 80-some easements. Is that right, Melanie?
Oh, no.
On this job? And we've sifted through all those. We think we've got all of the contract documents, meeting what the property owners' requests were, and then there's that whatever six or eight permits that we got acquired at the bottom of that page. That has been a fairly lengthy process getting through all of that. Then on to utilities, page three. I'm not going to cover all of these items. Some of the bigger items that we're aware of in terms of utility conflicts on this job. Item number two on the list. This project starts out right there at Lamson Woods, which is the site of the former wastewater treatment plant. We're relatively confident that there are some remains of buried concrete structures in that area. Where they are and how deep they are, we don't have very much information on that. So this contract is set up that if buried concrete is discovered, the contractor will need to determine the limits of it, and then any concrete removal will be a change order just because we didn't want to try to guess as to what would be there. Item number four, there are two power poles that are in conflict with the sewer project. We've been in contact with Lion Energy, and they're planning to relocate them before the contractor starts. I was just talking with Jacob Jones this week, and so it's on top of it, and hopefully it's all done before the contractor's ready to go in those areas. And then, number six, letter C. This project crosses the two primary transmission mains from the water treatment plant that feed the water towers at Fairfield. Based on survey information, we're relatively confident that those water mains are in conflict with our sewer. So the contract includes relocating both of those water mains as we're going through that area. The contractor will have a maximum of five days to relocate-- there'll be a maximum five-day shutdown period, and he can only shut down one water main at a time when they're doing that. Then on to page four, number eight. We're also-- sewer is going in front of the rec center at MUM, as we mentioned already. This is probably the most congested area with utilities on the entire project. There's-- and you can see I've listed out all the stuff we're aware of that's in the area. We've been in contact with MUM's maintenance folks, but most of that stuff is all private utilities, so their records are-- they have records, how accurate they are, we're not very sure. We think right now that there are no conflicts in that area, but with the number of things that we're crossing, there's bound to be something there that we don't have quite right on the drawings.
Stephen, can I ask about the water main shut-off? That's not five days that anybody's going to be without water.
No.
They'll fill the tower--
Right, so basically, that means they won't-- they'll still be the second main in service that whole time. So basically, what it means is they'll be able to fill the tower a lot more slowly than normal. That's right. So-- So the-- yeah, it won't take the city out of water at all. No. In terms of closures, this project has a lot of horizontal boring, which really reduces the number of road closures as a result of the project. However, there are still some that will be required. I've listed out kind of the four bigger ones that you can read through there. I'm not going to cover each one of them individually.
I would suggest, though, that-- make note of this, and you may be aware, but Pleasant Plain Road is a major thoroughfare for Cambridge.
Right.
So detours on 185th to Highway 1 probably be recommended during that period of time.
So the contract includes a clause that they're not supposed to have the-- that road closed during rush hour, so it's supposed to be fully open from 7:30 to-- I forget what it says exactly. 7:30 to 9:30, and 4:30 to 6:30, or something like that. But that is a good point. There is a stretch in there where the-- We'll take that into consideration. We may need to modify something else there.
Yeah, if it's going to be up to three weeks, the travelers are going to get it figured out, but maybe ahead of time it gets the work--
The reason I say that is that that particular area we're showing-- we're getting way into the weeds now, I'm sorry, guys.
It's time.
That particular area, we're showing part of that road to be removed and replaced with the project because it's so close to the roadway. That is-- we've set that up as, I'm going to say, a worst-case scenario. That's one of the things I'm going to discuss with whoever the contractor is, to see if there's any way that they can avoid having to do that. So that's-- there's lots of moving parts as we go through this.
Stephen, on the Broadway Street, what-- how's that going to impact bus traffic?
So the contractor will be required to coordinate with the school district if they're working during-- not in the summertime, so. And that's another thing that will be discussed during the pre-construction conference with the contractor. Chautauqua Park will be open, for the most part, during the project. However, the disc golf course holes two, three, and four will need to be closed while we're hooking up the public rest rooms that are in Chautauqua Park. The Loop Trail will also have some closures on it during construction. You can see listed down there, there's-- we've divided it up into kind of three segments. If you want to go to the very last page of the PDF, Jason? Oops, I lied. The last drawing sheet. Okay. Up one more. I lied again. Okay, here we go. So this shows the Loop Trail. See if I can see this right here. So the notes here kind of show where the trail will be closed. The notes with the solid border around it is stage-one closure, and the notes with the dashed around them is stage-two closure. So the contractor will be allowed to close stage-one of the Loop Trail for up to five months from Lamson Woods to Glasgow Road, which is-- would be from here to here. And those closures will be closed. All of-- we've got this set up so that all of the trail closed signs and fencing will go across the bridge, so that if someone wants to get in there, they're going to have to swim. So that's the first chunk, and they'll have-- they'll have up to-- what did I say? Five months to do that chunk right there. And that's based on about how fast they were building step-one, as to how we came up with that timeframe. Then they can only have one section closed at a time with the Loop Trail. So after that's done, then it would be closed from Glasgow Roads. It goes all the way to the BN, and then it's closed at the bridge at Chautauqua Park as well. And that allows the contractor to build from here all the way up to here, and then they have to do this whole boring right here under the railroad tracks in that six-month timeframe. And then, there's also the B Street Trail, which was the last drawing sheet that we looked at first. If you want to go down one, sorry. And that's just right here in this location. The lower traffic trail and the road will be right there. It should be open that whole time, so. Then, project award and completion down. I'm on page five of the letter now, Jason. As we said, the bids will be due November 26. We'll open the bids at that meeting, review them, and we'll send our recommendation to rural development. In a perfect world, rural development will turn around and say, "Yes, we can concur in your low bid," and you-- counsel can proceed with awarding a contract, and-- your low bid, and you, council can proceed with awarding a contract, and that should be able to happen at your December 16th council meeting. If they don't get back to us, most likely what will happen is we'll have you approve it contingent upon Rural Development concurrence at that December 16th meeting. So, I think that's all I had to cover. If you have any more questions.
Jason, where's this put us with your 2021 deadline, with the EPA deadline that they gave us?
Yeah, that coordinates with that deadline that was submitted, when did you submit that?
October.
In October, yep.
And it's been approved?
They haven't denied it.
Okay.
Okay, Stephen, thank you. So we'll open up the public hearing at this time and ask if there are any comments on the plan specifications form of contract estimates? Yes?
I just have two, well, really one request. So when you have street closings that interfere with getting to jobs or school, is there any way to work with the schools to send note homes with kids? I've had times where streets are closed and I had no idea, and then I'm rushing to get my child into school at ti, at the right time or to work on time. So having information about duration of closings and how, like, what area it covers would be really helpful as like a person who uses the roads.
Absolutely, thank you for that. Stephen, can you address how that, how the contractor, Melanie? Great.
Yeah, Erin and I communicate with the school and the transportation director fairly regularly, so when we do get to those points in the project, it's, it won't take much to be able to coordinate that with the schools. A lot of times when we do have road closures, the school will also get it on their Facebook page for, if it's affecting the Washington Elementary, it'll be on the Washington Elementary page and, and so forth, but we'll work with the school on that.
Thank you. And with the issue of duration, sometimes it's, we can put out a best guess, but weather-related construction sometimes will, and that's where a lot of community frustrations come in from time to time, is that we thought that project would be, and then, of course, you know, those are issues between the contractor being consistent in their work, so we will try and keep everyone as informed as we possibly can. Thank you, Melanie. Anyone else have any questions or concerns?
My main question was just concerning the wildlife in Lamson Woods. I know that there are quite a few animals that live back there, so I was just kind of curious as to what the plans might be to kind of reduce the area that they're taking up or try and preserve as much as possible without disturbing too much.
Thank you, Stephen. Address trees and habitat.
Right, so first off, the Indiana bat is an endangered bat species in this area, and the, the project has been through the Army Corps of Engineer permitting process, and they coordinate with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in that whole process. One of, I think really about, they had a couple requirements that we're following with, with the bid documents in this project. The primary one is that all potential bat habitat clearing has to take place when the bats are, are not going to be roosting, which is generally at this time of year until, I think, May 31st is the last that, that trees can be cut down.
March.
Yeah, that's what I meant, March 31st. So that will all be taking place in the winter months to reduce the impact to the endangered bat species. Also, Lamson Woods, as you mentioned, is a mitigation site, wetland mitigation site that the DOT constructed as a part of the bypass, when, I think it was part of the bypass when that was constructed. So we've coordinated with DOT on that as well, and so that, part of the Army Corps permit and part of what DOT is requiring is that that is all put back to all wetland species.
So that was one of the questions I had. How, does it go through the wetlands? I mean, is that going to be drained and changed at that time?
Right, so in that particular area, the sewer is going to be basically directly under the trail.
Under the trail?
Yep. However, the contractor has an easement all the way through there. He's got to get in there to, to build, to build that sewer.
How deep is it there? How deep is it at that point?
It's not, not real deep. I'm going to say maybe 10 feet.
So we, all right.
Totally guessing.
So not any extraordinarily big equipment?
No, so, yeah, step one was very deep. I'm going to say we had a lot of sewer 30-plus feet deep on step one. This one is a lot shallower in general. We've got a few sections that are 20-foot plus, but for the most part, we're in that 10 to 15-foot range, I think.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I completely appreciate the point because that is one of the most enjoyable and pristine areas of the trail, and it is a great woodland habitat in Lamson Woods, so we've let the contractors know our feeling for that, yeah.
We also have a couple endangered and threatened plant species that are along the project, and also part of that permitting process were that those particular plants have to have a physical barrier between the, between the project and those. There's some in the Frye property area in that trail, and then some also near Pleasant Plain.
One other thing.
It's like, there were, there were a lot of environmental things.
Yeah, so another item that the city decided to do, I'm going to say it's been two years ago now, is related to the construction method. So the sewer is being constructed through what's considered a forested wetland in many areas, which is a wetland that has trees growing in it, which is different than most people think of as being a wetland. And so in all of those areas, the city has elected to bore underneath the wetland to basically preserve it as it currently states, as it currently stands, as opposed to, the alternative would be basically cutting all those trees down and then establishing a wetland mitigation site somewhere, and then monitoring it for 10 years, and on and on and on, so.
Great, thank you. Good information. Appreciate it. Anyone else have any comments they'd like to make in the public hearing?
I'm not an engineer.
Not, will close the public hearing, and we'll move then to a resolution to approve the plan specifications form of contract and estimated cost for construction for step two, very important part of our project. Move by Thompson?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Now please call the roll.
Thompson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, council, I'll move to third reading of our ordinance 1183, establishing tax exempt, exemption for speculative shell buildings. I'll ask at this time, the council's received any feedback on this? Now we'll open up the public hearing and ask if there are any comments on this ordinance. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve from the third to the final, third and final reading.
Second.
By Anderson, second by Gandy. Any discussion? Now please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Council, I have one board of adjustment for your, a member for your approval. This is going to be a replacement. Who is it that's going off the board, Melanie?
Cole Boat.
Cole Boat, right? And Chris Estle has agreed to serve a term on the board of adjustment, which we're very pleased about. Chris is here this evening. Chris, would you stand up, please?
Thank you. So anyway, I'd entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Chris Estle to the board of adjustment.
So moved?
So moved by Gandy, second by Flornoy. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you, Chris. Counsel, I just wanted to, to mention, I attended a meeting on Saturday that was called by Representative Jeff Shipley, and it sounded like it was a public information meeting on 5G. And we've had those discussions, and we've passed an ordinance, a citing ordinance as best we can at this point in time. But I was a little disturbed at the outcome of the meeting because it was really, Representative organized it to be kind of a civil or community action for citizens to petition the council to take a strong position on, you know, on denying 5G access to our community, and, you know, we all understand that, you know, we have barriers and parameters that, that really kind of tie our hands in, in this regard. And one of those is the state's cell citing laws themselves. But he's taken this action, and there, you're going to be receiving postcards in the mail, because people were filling out postcards at the meeting. You're going to receive a letter directly from the representative about his position on this, but I just found it highly irregular for our state representative to be coming at our council this way and initiating this kind of action. So I plan to write a letter back when we do receive our letter, indicating that really the ball is in his court or in the state legislature's court, and if there are any options for us to open this issue up from a local control standpoint, it is going to be those state laws that have to change. So anyway, just a, a fair warning that you'll be receiving them, and it came out of this, this particular meeting. So we'll move on then to our committee reports. Actually, we have a RagBri final report from Michael Hallie. Michael?
Actually, I've got my friend Kevin, who's sporting a very handsome beard.
Okay.
Our treasurer is going to give the final report, so.
Great, thank you, Kevin. How are you?
Oh, doing real good.
Good.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, I'd just like to tell you a little bit about RagBri. When we started meeting back in February, we started out, we had to come up, we borrowed $20,000 from Iowa State Bank as our seed money. We in turn paid that back in July. For our income, our total income that we brought in was $111,414.12. I'll just highlight some of the, our biggest part of our income. Our T-shirt sales brought in $49,86. Our beer garden brought in $34,117. Electrical rental on the square was $1,075. Our food vendors, any vendors that was, our take that day was $20,335. And then our, vast of our income come in from sponsorships. That was $49,693. The $20,000 of it was from loss funds that you graciously approved for us to be able to do this. $8,500 of it was from RagBri Corporation, and that left a little over $21,000 that was from the community, private businesses and organization. So people really stepped up and helped that out. And then we, our expenses was $107,785, which left us a profit to redispers a $3,628 and some odd cents. I'd just like to hit the highlights of the bigger expenses. Our sanitation costs, which were the kibos and the big yards, 30-yard bins and things, was $18,462. Our beer garden expenses was $24,000, and our entertainment for that one day was $32,486. Our law enforcement costs were $11,281. EMT support was $758, and our transportation that we used, the school buses, was $39,44. So, just recently, the executive committee met to decide what to do with the last $36,28. We decided to give $1,700 of it back to the nonprofits. That would have been about five. And that left $1,928.57, and the committee wanted to have something on the square since that's where most of the activity, and one of the newer things was the kiosk. So the committee decided to give that $1,900 back to the CVB board to help maintain that in the future, because obviously the maps will change each year and things like that. And with that figured out, we bring it down to a zero budget, so.
Great, thank you, Kevin. That's good news. I didn't, I, that's, that's good news. That's more than I expected.
Well, no, I was a little concerned there for a while. A lot concerned for a while.
For sure, yeah. I, you know, I know personally, I, you know, when I, when I learned that RagBri was doing something different for the first time and doing two stops on the Mississippi instead of our city being a Friday night stop, I was a little concerned, and I think a little bit of that played out, I guess, in terms of the numbers of people.
Yes, I believe it did.
But still, you, you, you know, your committee did a admirable job, represented the community extremely well, and it's, it's great to know that we're not in the hole and that people came out with something, so congratulations. Counsel, any?
Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Kevin?
I didn't go in the great, the whole P and L, about 10 pages. I don't think you want it, but not really of it all. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and again, we do really appreciate the volunteers throughout the community that, that step up, those that helped with all the organizing for many months are really the, the shoulders that this has carried on, but if you drive around the community during that day and see how many people have loaned their yards to sometimes 20, 30 bikers, it's, it's also very impressive, so, well done. And we won't talk about the future of RagBri here. Crazy. All right, so we'll move then to our administrative report. Aaron, do you have something for this evening? You have a memo that you've given to the council?
Yep, I'm going to highlight a couple of things on their, the top three items on that memo. Engineers agreement with Klinger for the Libra air conditioner. The cost of that is fairly minimal. It's about $5,500, but requesting Melanie to go through the process of setting up the bids and specifications, her engineer's license is not specifically for buildings and for air conditioning and heating units, so we had, we need for her comfort with her license and requiring an engineer's seal, we're, we need to go with another engineering firm to help put that together. We're going, Melanie is still going to be involved in it, but we're going to have Klinger do the majority of that. We're going to go with that contract here as soon as possible to continue with the process of that air conditioning unit getting replaced. I contacted Jennifer Moville with Simmer and Corey as far as codification update. She still needs to send us some questions to finish up. It's the last set of questions. Her email today told me she will have those to us here within the next week. So we should be able to finish up our codification and move that forward finally in the near future. The downtown lighting project, there were some issues with the equipment that they sent here. There is some manufacturing specifications that have, the manufacturer has to make some adjustments to the equipment that was sent to us to do the inserts in all of the decorative lighting downtown. They're working on that for a timeframe, but once that's finalized, they are going to finish the lights downtown, and it shouldn't only take, it should only take about a week to do that. For the future, tomorrow, Rebecca and I are going to be having a conference call with Piper Jaffray to work on our response to some of the audit questions, along with our investment strategy with our unobligated reserves. And I also talked with Waste Management today regarding our RFP that we'll be putting together and get that put out in the spring so that we have a, we receive the RFP back somewhere between April 1st and May 1st, so that we can have a contract again in July for our solid waste pickup.
All right, thank you, Aaron. Appreciate that. Is there any other business for the council?